Good evening, welcome to the August 11th meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Liberal.
We stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody just continue to stand for a moment, bear with me for a quick prayer. Heavenly Father, grant us wisdom and clarity as we begin this meeting, unite our hearts and minds in common purpose, and guide our discussions and decisions to honor you and serve the needs of the community. Amen. N.V.C.
We have an agenda before us, any changes, suggestions?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have a couple sets of minutes here, July 26th Council Management Strategy Session. Anything changes, updates?
Move to approve the July 26th Council Management Strategy Meeting Minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 26th Council Management Strategy Session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one more for the regular meeting for July 28th. Any changes, corrections, updates?
Motion to approve the July 28th Regular Meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 28th Regular Meeting Minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing.
A public hearing for creating the Grange Hall Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive districts.
Staff presentation, Mr. Lonsbury.
Thank you. So tax increment financing sounds really interesting. It is a financing mechanism that is established through the Ohio Revised Code. It's an economic development tool that cities can use to finance infrastructure projects. It has a statutory process, which is different than our normal process. So this is not an ordinance today, this is the public hearing that's required under the statute. So it's not going to be, there's no action item at the end of this. There's a public input after my presentation, and then on September the 8th, there will be an ordinance where there will be another public hearing, and at that point, there could be a discussion with council and a decision made on whether to pass or to not, turn down the ordinance. So there's some basics with a TIF. Like I said, it's an economic development mechanism to be eligible, and there's multiple ways you can be eligible, you can be a blighted area, but the most common way for an area to be considered for a TIF is when there's a certificate by the engineer that the public infrastructure serving that district is inadequate to meet the development needs of the district, which in our case, this undeveloped piece of land is very clear that the infrastructure is insufficient, and there has to be evidenced by a written economic development plan. Both of those things, the certificate of the engineer is completed, and that economic development plan will be part of the ordinance that is approved with the TIF. So those requirements are met. In general, a TIF can be up to 30 years in length, and it can be up to a 100% exemption from taxes. If it is greater than 75% or longer than 10 years, you would be required by statute to get school board approval for the TIF. So instead of taxes being paid by the property owners, they make what are called payments in lieu of taxes, which are referred to as pilots. Those funds are then used for the improvements. The thing is, this has no effect on what the property owner actually pays. They're paying the same exact amount they would pay if it was no TIF, but instead of it being tax payments, they're pilot payments instead. So the property owners honestly don't, doesn't mean anything to them. The only thing this really affects is the city and where that money goes. So this is a chart for example purposes only. As you can see, there's a baseline standard distribution of the taxing entities. When the, that doesn't change, but when the improvements are made, a portion of the increased value will be paid to the pilots, 75% of that in this case, the exemption is, to pay for those public improvements, with 25% going through the standard distribution that they would go to the normal entities. Importantly, and I think this happens a lot, people don't understand TIFs, they think they're tax abatements, because people aren't technically paying taxes. They think the property owner is paying a reduced amount of money. That is not true. The pilot payments that they are making are identical to the tax payments they would be making but for the TIF. The only difference here is where that money goes. So in this case, the development we're talking about is the Wrightwood Springs Development. It's approximately 54 acres with 121 homes. The average home value is $550,000, although I think they expect it to be more, which would bring the total project value to 66,550,000, with 35% of that being that estimated total taxable value. In our case, instead of it being the 100%, 30-year TIF, what we're proposing is a 75% rolling five-year TIF. The development is split up into four individual incentive districts, and once the value in the improvements in those districts reaches $6.5 million, then that five-year 75% tax exemption period would begin for the TIF, and at the end of the five years, it goes right back to normal taxation. The estimate, and this is just an estimate because it really depends on how fast these homes are built, the value of the homes that are built, but the estimate that came from bond council was $3.4 million in payments for public infrastructure projects. We discussed the reimbursement agreement previously at a prior meeting over the improvements that Rockwood is making as part of the development, and part of that is $800,000. We've agreed up to that amount would be reimbursed to Rockford Homes. That is not for improvements in the development itself, those are for Grange Hall improvements for everyone in the city. But that would leave, as you can see, 2.1, I'm bad at math on my feet, 2.6 million dollars of additional money for infrastructure improvements within the city that we would be able to use. So that is the basics of what the TIF does, just as a mechanism once again of that money that would normally be paid in property taxes going specifically to a fund for public infrastructure improvements. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak to it, please remember you have three minutes. State your name and address.
How are you doing? It's Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. I do have concerns with this, and that's primarily with the money that would be going to pay for the school requirement. Currently Beaver Creek Schools are primarily resident funded, we get very little money from the state, and by denying all this additional money that would come in as homes get built and people move in, that is money that we would have to fund for the individuals' children that will be coming in there, because we are not getting any money in for that particular requirement. That is wrong, that technically is a form of harm that the residents of Beaver Creek will have to incur, and they should not have to. So that is a concern. The other one that I have is the fact that the public infrastructure, some of the things that you covered, and although the improvements are supposed to support specifically what is in the designed 54-acre area, doing anything that starts the infrastructure requirement for Spring House Park should not be included in it. And the reason I say that is for the schools, we voted and passed a levy for Spring Hill Park, the residents voted against that, and you are continuing to apply resources and effort to something that the voters did not want, and I think that is fundamentally wrong. So we've got it, but like I said, we have, look like we have another opportunity to discuss this, and I will do that the next time, but in closing, I'd just like to let you know, I do not think we should go this route. The funds that Beaver Creek Schools deserve, they should get, and if there's any other infrastructure that is not just going to improve that particular development, it would go to improve the city overall, and that should be something that we address to the city or the residents, so that they can make an informed decision and make a vote on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, nice to see everyone. Ed Malouf, 4128 Middleton Point in Beaver Creek. I kind of agree with the gentleman behind me. This is property taxes from houses should be used what everybody else's property tax go to. If the developer's coming in and wants to develop a piece of land, okay, fine, it's on him. It's his property, I offer property rights, he has the right to build, providing it falls within our zoning laws and everything, but to try to take money from these people for, what, 10 years to put into improvements? Well, I think Grange Hall is fine. You know, not too many people have been happy about this 125 homes going into Beaver Creek. Beaver Creek's getting crowded, they're talking about the additional traffic, so if these people are coming, like I said, it's their land, they want to build it, they want to develop it, that's fine, he can put the price into the home, but our property tax should be used for what everybody else's property tax is going for, as far as I can remember. You folks want to push the city income tax. Well, you get 125 homes, what, $65,000 or $23,000, million dollars in excess revenue? That's great. To put it in infrastructure for one section, it's not right. It's not being fiscal responsible, it's not being right, and I'm just totally against that. Again, that's my opinion, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will officially close the citizen part of it, the public part of it, and I think Mr. Lonsbury has something he wants to say.
The only thing I wanted to do is a clarification, it is not a 10-year period, it is a five-year rolling TIF, and that's specifically designed to minimize any impact on school funding. The development, the schools are going to get more money with the development than they would regardless of whether there's a TIF or not, and after five years, it'll go back to the maximum of what they would receive.
This is not a decision item, so this is a state requirement to have this meeting. We've had it, and so we'll move on to our next item. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-13.
Ordinance 25-13, an ordinance rezoning .64 acres from V2 community business further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 44 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to see PUD 25-3, Commercial Plan Unit Development.
And this is the second reading, anything else from council or staff? Counsel?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-13.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-13. It's okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution 25-19, this resolution, excuse me, authorizing the police department to accept the Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention DARE Grant Program funding.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the Beaver Creek Police Department applied for the Ohio 2025-26 Drug Use Prevention Grant to be used towards the DARE officer's salary for conducting drug abuse resistance education program in schools. The Attorney General's Office reported that there was $1.8 million available for all DUP applicants, and requests totaled 2.88 million. On August 4th, we were awarded $23,706.73 for the 2025-26 academic year. So staff recommends council approval for the police department to accept this drug use prevention grant.
Input from council?
Chief, with a fifth grader that recently went through the DARE program, please offer my thanks to Officer Pefley. Really an excellent program, and thank you for your continued work with it and the way that it instructs our young people. Thank you very much.
Will do, thank you, she does a great job.
She does.
Motion to approve Resolution 25-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-19. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chief. I have a decision item, patrol recruit position for 2025. You get to talk to us again.
Okay. So, as you know, the PD is currently at our authorized staffing level of 55 officer positions, which includes 53 sworn officers and two police recruits. So at this point, the next open position that we are anticipating is in March of '26 due to a retirement. So as a way to continue to be proactive in our hiring process and minimize the amount of time that we drop below full staffing, we're requesting the approval to increase the authorized staffing by one position to 56 for 2025 by adding a police recruit position. So we would hire this recruit, enroll him into the police academy in September, and his graduation swear-in approximately six months later would coincide with the officer's retirement in March and allow us to seamlessly fill that vacancy. So as it stands now, we would need to wait until March until that position becomes available, and then attempt to fill it at that point. So depending on the eligibility list at that time, as well as the certification status of the candidates on that list, it's possible that depending on who we hired, it could take several months from that point to get them eligible to be sworn in. So this is a new situation that we have here, it's one we haven't had to address in the past, because we've always had open positions. So I'm happy to address this now and be able to come up with a solution for this and create a plan that allows us to make the necessary adjustments now to authorize staffing, and in 2026 and beyond, we plan to also look at this and be proactive in budgeting and staffing. So we can be proactive in hiring when there's a known vacancy that's going to be coming down the road. So I also want to add that by adding this position, it's not going to create any changes or additions to the current budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a quick question, but I think it's more procedural and legal. Is there a way that this motion can be made so that this can take effect every time we have X amount of time leeway before retirement, or does this have to come before us every single time we know?
As he mentioned, in 2026, we're going to take care of that, so this won't happen again.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll include that as part of the budget process for 26.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, this was something that we hadn't experienced before, so we're fully staffed, and now we know of a retiree, and it's just a scenario that we haven't been in before, and we're going to take care of it for 26. So we just need council to help us out right now for this year.
Yeah, I had the same question as Councilwoman Garcia, so thank you for asking it. Congratulations on being at 55 sworn officers, that's wonderful, and thank you for doing all of this within budget as well. It really makes it very easy. I'm in support of this mayor, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I know we're approved for 55 sworn, but we only have 53 sworn, basically, so we're really not affecting it that much, and he would come in or she would come in at the same time as retirement, so I think I don't see a real problem with this personally.
Yeah, I very much appreciate the proactive approach and forward thinking, I think this is great. Thank you.
It's just nice to be able to say we're going to be at 55.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve additional recruit position for 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve patrol recruit position for 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council time. Start with Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I, speaking of police, just want to commend the police and the parks and all of our staff for the, I forget what we called it, but essentially the National Night Out, we just did a little bit earlier. It was a great event, it was very warm, but very, very well attended, and so as always, it was a great time. Judson had a great time climbing on the helicopter and watching it take off, so we had fun. And I also am very lucky to do the anniversaries.
Thanks, babe. So for the police department, we have Curtis Kimmerly with three years, Kathleen Gee with eight years, Robert Lee with 19, Nick Amato with 21, Chad Lindsey with 23, Brad Piesekki with 24, and Brad Klein with 25. For public service, we have Brandon Curly with five years, and Steve Perdue with six. For parks, we have Tim Clemens with two years, planning Matt Funk, 18 years, and for the city manager's office, we have Star Joy for one year and Monica Jones for two years, which seems crazy. It feels like just yesterday Monica joined us, and so glad to have everyone on board. Congratulations on your anniversaries, and I hope that we continue down the path of these long duration of employment. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Doer.
Appreciate it, Mayor. I too attended the Night Against Crime, so wonderful turnout. I want to thank Officer Diaz for coordinating the dunk tank, and I want to thank all the children that dunked me in said tank, it was a lot of fun, and, but in all seriousness, we had officers from the county, from Montgomery County, took my three children, a lot of questions were answered, and great outreach to the community. Alongside the mayor and Councilman Kern, we attended the Northwest Regional Water Treatment Plant ribbon cutting ceremony. We've had regular updates from the Green County Sanitary Engineering Department, and water quality is really one that's seen improvements, but really remarkable to see the new facility in action, so appreciated that. This is outside of Beaver Creek, but in Cedarville, Ohio, at Cedarville University where I teach, I had the opportunity to attend a prayer dedication for the new Bolt House Academic Center, 47,000 square feet, building that's being constructed right now, and what a blessing from God, very much appreciate that, and all the that's happening in Green County. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. I also would like to extend my congratulations to the new captain, Piesekki, so he had his anniversary, but I remember him when he was Detective Piesekki, signing off on all the arrest warrants when I was doing criminal defense work, so he and I have a nice working relationship, and I'm really glad to see him continuing his career in Beaver Creek, so that's great for him. I had the opportunity to attend the Dayton Defense Luncheon with the mayor, was it last week, or late, late last week, with Congressman Turner as our speaker, and truly regardless of politics, Congressman Turner is a phenomenal advocate for our area, for this region, he works really hard for the base, he's very knowledgeable in some of the foreign regions that we have going on, and it was really great to hear the updates from the NATO Parliamentary Assembly that we had here in Dayton, and he was talking about how the Dayton region had more news and more media attention than when they had it in Toronto, and Toronto had that big brawl, if you remember, from the last NATO Parliamentary Assembly. So fights excluded, we still were able to capture national attention from this region. So I thank him for coming to talk to us, and the questions that he answered for us, and some of the reassurances he gave us about the base was really appreciated, so that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littoral.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the MVRPC meeting on the 7th, this is just recently, and I do want to tell you Chuck that Judy Dodge told me, make sure I said hi to Chuck, from her. They, the meeting was, was, one decision item was made, and it was on a clean energy plan that they had put together. Matt from MVRPC had done all the work on it, him and the team. What it basically boiled down to was that there is no, no longer, all subsidies have dried up for all these clean energy initiatives are gone, you know? So, and, and in questioning Matt during his presentation, he wasn't able to ascertain that anything that he was proposing, nothing was self-sustainable in their projections, and it was mostly all, I guess, citizen redesign, pushing out to the citizens and saying, hey, this is what you should be doing for clean energy. They asked us, they asked for a buy-in on the, on the support for the report, and there were, myself and five others opposed it. The measure still passed. There was also track, there was information on track, there were three initiatives that they were reporting on grants that had been approved. There's approximately $40 million worth of grants, Montgomery County, Miami County, and those are mostly planning, planning money that have been approved through grants, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kern.
Mike, attend the Night Out event, and just a special congratulations to all the law enforcement agencies who participated in that, tremendous amount of citizen involvement coming out, asking a lot of questions, and also to Councilmember Doer for his endurance in the bucket. Also went to the first Thursday event that the mayor had at the golf club, and it was absolutely incredible. Lots of people turned out, real opportunity for small businesses to be recognized, new businesses to be recognized coming into Beaver Creek, and that was really great. Again, a special congratulations to the police department, the advancement of the new captain, it's already been mentioned tonight, really a fantastic thing. A footnote to Councilmember Garcia, anybody know how Congressman Turner started? A neighborhood president.
Thank you, Mayor, Honor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brails.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Councilmember Littoral for attending MVRPC. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I was out of town on vacation Thursday and Friday, so I'm sorry I missed the first Thursday event, too, but I appreciate you going and representing us. The last thing I wanted to mention was Legion 14 opioid money. Today I got the opportunity to see how some of it has been spent, and I went to the ribbon cutting for a urgent care and extended rehab facility that has just been renovated in Springfield, and walked through the entire thing, and it's beautiful, and it's going to help our region, and so, Councilwoman, if you could pass on my thanks to the committee for that, and love to see some money come our way, but at least it's being spent in our region, and the facility is very helpful. That's all.
Thank you very much. It's been kind of a busy two weeks for me. I attended the Clark State Workforce Development Meeting in Urbana, and they're really doing a lot of things in Champaign County and Urbana up there with all the businesses and housing developments that are moving in up there. I too attended the Beaver Creek Night Against Crime, and I want to thank CEO Travis O'Neil and the Parks Department for putting together a really great show. They had a lot of different people, there are a lot of different departments, Sheriff's Department, FBI, the Dayton Police Squad, or the Bomb Squad, so it was really nice to see all those guys out there. I too was in the ribbon cutting for the water treatment plant, that's an amazing facility out there. It's taken a long time to get that here, but I know from my own personal standpoint, the water that I've got at home now is so much better than it ever was before, so it's just really nice to have that. I was invited to attend a firehouse dedication out at Wright Patterson Air Force Base that was named in honor of Fire Chief Elmer Bill Ross, who joined the Wright Patterson was named in honor of Fire Chief Elmer Bill Ross, who joined the Wright Patterson Fire Department in 1959 when he came out of the military. And he was the first black firefighter hired by the Wright Patterson Air Force Base. So it was quite an honor for him. You know, being mayor gives me an opportunity to participate in a lot of really interesting things, but probably the most exciting and important, important thing to me anyway that I get to do is I get to officiate marriages. And I did one of those just a week ago, and that was actually a friend of mine. She asked me, "Can you do, can you marry me?" And I said, "Well, I probably need to ask my wife first." But I said, "No, I'd be happy to." But it was a real honor to be able to do that. I attended a couple of Blue Star family events. One was a collaborative breakfast on the food deserts facing the junior enlisted people of the military. And then followed that up with a school supply giveaway this past Saturday. There were 150 families signed up, and they gave out 360 backpacks full of school supplies for these kids. Probably could have given out another 300 based on what was there, so they can use whatever help they can get there. I was at the Defense Luncheon as well, with Councilwoman Garcia. And I was really honored to be able to swear in our new captain this morning. I've known Brad since, for about 20 years, and it's, the room was full, so that tells you what kind of support he has for this. So I think Brad's going to do an excellent job. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too congratulate Captain Paisecki. I think he's the first that I've promoted twice. Promoted him to sergeant, promoted him to captain. So, you know, nine years ago when I met him, yes, he's definitely grown in the position and grown in his skills, so very, very well deserved. I'm very proud of Brad. So congratulations, captain. Tonight, just real quick, just a few things. The senior center is still having the van fundraiser. This is a campaign to purchase a new larger transportation van. One of the current larger vans, of course, is nearing its end of its service life. And so, you know, the thousands of trips that happen for access to health care, shopping, groceries, all that with our seniors. We want to make sure they keep them safe and dependable transportation. So see, visit Beaver Creek, Ohio, beaver creek oh h dot my rec dot com or the senior center to help donate. No donation is too small. The Town Hall, this is at the end of this month, fast approaching, Wednesday, August 27th, 6 to 8. This is at the Beaver Creek Golf Club, and the city invites you to a Town Hall to learn about the city's finances and the questions answered. Your participation is valuable in shaping the city's future. This piggybacks off the couple of Town Halls that we had last year that are still available out there on finance under the city's YouTube channel, so you can still visit last year's. This year we'll have some repeat, but we're trying to keep it fresh. And the biggest fresher-upper is our finance director, David Graham, will be carrying a lot of the load instead of myself. Nobody wants to hear me talk, so it'd be great to hear a different voice. Shakertown Road Project Open House, this is Tuesday, August 26th, 5 to 7, here in Council Chambers. We're very impressed with the turnout on these open houses that we had. The sidewalk one we just had a week or so ago had good participation, so we're hoping the same way with this. This is in collaboration with the Ohio Department of Transportation, planning improvements on Shakertown Road from Crossridge Drive to Southern Bell Boulevard. An open house will be held to provide information about the project and discuss the answer questions, feedback. I think the, our engineering staff and usually a vendor, a design vendor is there as well. So more project information can be found at beaver creek ohh.gov/engineering. And although we're getting ready to start our Citizens Academy, the, which we kind mirrored and copied off of the police academy, but the police is getting ready to start there, so sign up is still for their eight work, eight-week program. Provides a unique opportunity to interact with and get firsthand information from our police officers. It's Wednesdays from September 10th through October 29th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday, October 18th. Think they go to the gun range that day. It's free, but registration is required. Visit beaver creek ohh.gov/cpa to apply. And that is limited position, so please, please hurry if you're interested. No one ever has taken it, has ever regretted that. They love, want it to be longer. So it's a great thing they're doing. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. I've now reached the point of citizen comments. If you'd like to address council on any subject, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
This is Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. This is also a little bit of a continuation on my previous comments. But my question to the city council and the staff, what is your commitment towards the education of our youth? I want you to know that I consider myself a parent of a little over 8,000 students, and I consider it to be very, very important that we do not slight them or anything else. And the other concern is I don't want to see anybody coming into this new housing development and be able to get a free ride for the five years that this, this funding is, is going to be in the TIF program. So those are issues. And again, I still have concerns that, that the infrastructure that plans to have this group fund is going to go for the Spring Hill Park, and that is, like I said, I still consider that very wrong. So thank you very much for allowing me this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, oh, go ahead.
Ed Malouf, 4128 Middleton Point in Beaver Creek. First of all, I don't want Mr. Lamond to pass out, but I went to the, the presentation for the new bike trail. I liked it. What I liked about it was zero. It's not going to cost us anything. No new levy, no new nothing. Had a nice talk with the box man, and he's, I think he's on the right track. He wants to handle it like a business. I'm all in favor of that. Now, my other quick question is, is the council preparing for the upcoming storms that could take place with property taxes? And if the Senate overrides, the governor's veto on the property taxes? Have we, have you folks been looking at that or anything, putting out information? There's a ballot initiative that's going to be put on in 2026 that's gaining a lot of steam to abolish property tax. So are you folks all aware of that and preparing for that coming up? I mean, these are just things that are out there that's happening that's going to be hitting us and whatever. And you do know the fact that Beaver Creek has voted down, I don't know how many times now, the city tax. They've been voting down the levies in the schools. Have you been listening to the voices of the people that taxed enough? You know, property taxes just keep going up, up and up. Senior citizens now are getting a little bit more concerned. But with that, I just got one other question. I heard the senior citizen had to cut back some of its hours due to funding. One of the thoughts I just had is have they thought of opening up the senior citizen on off-hours as a rec center, like Ketterman has a rec center? And they could charge people to use it because, I mean, you know, whatever a fee for the hours that it's closed to the senior citizens, they might want to consider raising some money that way by opening up the facilities as a rec center? Now, that was just one idea I had thought of. But with that, nice to meet everybody. Take care. See yous later and.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the citizen comment of the portion of the meeting. Mr. Curran?
Move to adjourn, your honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.